Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am Barbara Hamm. I live out on 1302 Bartlett Road. And across from the Globus Project. And I just wish you all would come out and visit me out there. And see exactly what's going on. At two o'clock this afternoon, I was awakened with all the noise that's going on. The trucks backing up and all the lights and so forth. So, I lost sleep last night. And then this, today at lunch, I'm sitting in my house. My pastor and his wife, they're to visit with me. And the house starts shaking. And it was beyond my belief that if I was asleep, well, the house starts shaking again. So, this is just hard to believe what's going on in a residential area which should never be. And I know my comments won't benefit me, but maybe it will pierce your conscience when you approve another thing like this in a residential area. Okay, I've always kept my place nice and neat. And it's like you're in a trash dump. The bottles, the papers, and the blowing up into the yard. Plus the dust on my front porch. And it's just a mess, and it should never be. Is this something, I'm gonna ask you this question. Is this something you would want on the street directly across from where you live? I can answer that. I'd like to ask each one of you individually who have approved this out there in the residential area. But I can answer for you. No, you would not. And you would be fighting against it. So, it's hard for me to know why you approved it for residential area. But I did realize it's all about the money and with disregard to people. And I leave you with this thought. The scripture says in Galatians 6:7, "Be not deceived; God is not mocked. For whatsoever a man sows, he shall also reap." And I've lived a long time in my life, and I've seen that's, the Bible is true. That word of God is truth. Goodness.
That's okay.
And it's powerful. But I've seen it come to life. I've seen it come to truth in my own life. I could give you examples. It comes to truth in an individual. In a business relationship, in this country, we see where it's coming to truth. Now, and I won't be here to see this. But when you disregard people and you, you know, there's a price to pay. And it's, things are not gonna prosper as well. And I'm, as I say, I won't be here to see it, but many of you will be here to see it. So, I just leave you with that thought. And thank you for letting me express my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with new businesses evening and the city manager update.
I'll start with the, after Miss Hales' comments about the Globus Project. I have received the, an update. I'm now on the construction out there. She's correct, they did do the night pours last night. They, they have scheduled pours for tonight. And they have scheduled for Thursday and Friday night. Don't know if those Thursday and Friday night will happen because of the weather. But if they're not able to pour then, they'll have, they'll have two more night pours at some point. Probably next week. And once they're done with that, they'll, they have a truck aping to pour. I'm not sure if they're gonna do that at night or during the day. They, they didn't specify that. Then after that, they kind of pour along those little walkways that are alongside. So, that's all the information that I have on, on that particular project and their schedule. On the DOT project at Exit 2, they are, and you may have come through today. They started paving in the center, getting that prepared today in the center portion. And that's to lead up to a traffic shift on November 2nd. They'll do that shift at night. I don't know all the details on that. They didn't provide that, but we have a conference call in tomorrow, so we'll know more about that. My expectation is that they're, I'm going to probably move to two lanes. Either north or south lanes. And close the other side and start working on demolition in those areas. Probably realign them, but again, not specific on that. They are paving in the center, so it's probably down to two lanes now. And then they'll start getting to some point where they'll shift all traffic lanes over. The West Point Village project is still progressing. They're still planning construction in the first quarter of 2022. They're working to finalize some of the issues with fire hydrants, the fire flow, the water feeders and such for the city to the site. They've also determined they have a bit of a financing gap. And they're applying for some additional funds to fill that. And they're saying that's because of the pandemic and the price that that has cost on the construction industry, the materials and things like that. So, they're seeing a price increase in the project. And so, they have a shortfall in, in the funding for that. They've also said that they'll come probably at the next general work session. We give the council a full update of where they are. Maybe they'll move forward with the project. We are continuing to work on the process of getting the water tank relettered. Just, just moving through that. We should get that done before the end of the year. The house construction in the Harris Creek project, taking back up. They're able to get materials, I think. They're able to get windows quicker than they thought they would. That was a big holdup issue on finishing houses. So, we're starting to see some of those finalized. And again, every one that they sell, I mean, if they finish out there, it's generally pre-sold. So, that looks really good for the housing market. Carvel's Pizza downtown is moving on quickly. And they're still, according to their reports this morning, they're still planning to be open in late November. One point that I wanted to make is, I've got some information from the municipal gas authority. And they said we're gonna be looking at increased gas costs this winter. That is not a rate increase from the city. It's not a rate increase from the gas authority. It's gonna be an increase in the cost of gas that we buy to sell to our customers. So, there's nothing that we have control over. It's not West Point specific. It'll be across the country. It's really because of a low inventory of gas. Our gas providers have not been resupplying their stocks of natural gas. So, those, those stocks are low. And that, that's probably gonna cause an increase. Because the other reason, there's a higher than ever demand for natural gas. Because it's been used to generate electricity and any other thing. So, the, the gas authority is saying that probably, on average, a customer that uses gas heat in the winter could probably see a $25 a month increase in their, in their gas based on the increased cost of natural gas to the provider. And that's everything I've got as far as update.
Anybody questions?
Yeah, I was wondering if, I mean, you've got things that you all have the lines of communication open between the city staff and the Globus contractors. Is there any way that this information can be disseminated to the residents, especially the key ones that are affected so negatively by the vibration, by the noise in the middle of the night? Any way that those people could be made aware of the schedule? If I'm having my minister over for lunch, and I know that that's gonna happen the night before, I might not do it that next day, 'cause I know I'm gonna not get much sleep or whatever, you know, planned for. So, is there any way we could just open the lines of communication to extend to them? It's good for us to know if we get calls or if we get questions about it. But, you know, I live on 8th Street, and I don't feel bad. And I don't get, it doesn't affect me the way that I have somebody right across the street from me.
Sure, we can, we can look to see how we can get them to the election.
And as you mentioned, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday is the dates that are planned for that pouring concrete in the middle of the night. If that's, and it sounds like you were saying that's pretty much the bulk of the major pours. You know, that you can kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel as far as the major, major noise and disruption. So, you know, if I lived in that area, I would welcome knowing kind of, you know, what the course of events might be. So, you think you could communicate that?
Sure. I'd like to do that.
And let's see, West Point Village water tank. You mentioned Carvel's Pizza. Where is that going? I mean, is that in the old Irish bread pub?
No, that's well, it's spicy that's going.
Right.
It's across the street on the corner of 8th and 3rd, right there in the old furniture store building on the corner.
Across the street, like next to Hensler's?
No, on the, on the.
It's old Kessler's building, old craft master.
Yeah, craft master.
Oh, okay, all right. There's a furniture something in part of that, okay. All right, so, at Bull Street, I was gonna ask, that's what I thought was going into the actual pub. Is that still on?
It is. They're, they're moving at a slower pace, but they're working on their fire suppression system and getting all that work done right now. We're still doing some inspections up there for that.
Can you address what's going on in the downtown area? It looks like maybe sewer lines, water lines, something. Just as much as I've been able to gather, it has something to do with the lofts that are being put in in the iconic building there on the corner. Used to be the bank, I think, many, many years ago.
Right.
And to, you know, the access for water and sewer services for those three lofts that'll be up there was greater than what our infrastructure would accommodate? And so, we'll have, is that true? Is that, can you speak to that?
That's correct. They, they had to improve those, size of those lines. They also had to sprinkle the building. So, they had to have a larger water service over there. So, that's exactly what that work is, provide that access.
And obviously, that internal expense is the property owners. But how much, what is that for us as far as city expenses?
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did pay to have the new manhole put in the street, which was, that, that thing is about 15 feet deep right there. So, it was good for us to have an access point out there. You know exactly where that's at. It was beneficial infrastructure, but it also provided them an access point to it.
Yeah, it looks like major work. So, is that an implication of what we might need to do in the future to, to support the rest of downtown West Point? As we evolve with more development? Or is that probably just one of the times?
Yeah, case by case scenario. I mean, some, some buildings need it. Some, most of the buildings we've done have not been had that much work as far as sewer connection is.
That infrastructure continues to be a concern, and I'm not just down, I wasn't much so aware of the problems downtown as east side. It's obviously a problem over there. Which moves me to my next question. Higgins Street, full of homes, two homes are going in over there. My understanding is there was some conversation about putting, well, we've, we're doing work to allow them to tap on to sewage, to city sewage and water. And there were a couple of residents who had septic tanks and might have been able to join in on that project.
Right.
So, are all of those homes out there on Higgins Street, are all of them on septic systems? Or some, just some of them?
Just, just the one on the end right there is my understanding. And one that we picked up in that project was the one that was on septic tank, right?
Okay, so, and that's because they were just built at different times or what? Normally on a, you know, Higgins Street is developed, you get access to the street. I suppose about.
I'm sure it was, I don't know the history on that. But for whatever reason, that house was not connected.
And the house next to it is not on septic?
I, I don't, I'm not sure about that. If it, if it's not, we certainly won't get it connected since we got that capacity to connect them there.
Okay, anybody else?
I agree with Dee Dee. It's good to be in communication when the folks on West Point Road. And keep them as informed as possible. I've actually been out there. When Miss Hales said that her house shakes, her house shakes. To say that it's a mild tremor is an understatement. The earth moves when you're out there. So, I, I can understand her concerns. And I know they're being addressed. I know she's spoken with some of you, and you've been quick to respond. And they're very appreciative of that. It is a sad situation, though. We worked out, you know, shutting things down at 6 o'clock every night. And then turned around and they told us they had to pour at night.
Correct.
And that was kind of a gut blow to several. You want to celebrate growth. You wanna be able to truly get behind development. And then sometimes a developer makes it hard. I think that's what's happened here. But I, I do know that people out there have been greatly concerned and with right. So, because like Miss Hales said, I don't think any of us want that prostate from us. It's just truth.
And I agree. None of us want to stifle growth and development. Certainly, you know, we remember, most of us remember, when we did have companies that wanted to do business here, companies that were doing business here in this area. And although it is still pretty much one dimensional, and that's, you know, a situation that needs to be addressed eventually. You know, we don't want the reputation of not being corporate, company friendly, not being business friendly, not being development friendly. At the same time, we don't want the reputation from people who might want to move to this area of being not friendly or not sensitive to the needs of the rest of us. So, you know, it's a, it's a two-way street, and we need to think about it from all angles. You know, it's good to have this money and the development and jobs. Right now, we got so many jobs, can't fill them, you know. We try, we're trying to increase our census 200. And we can't seem to keep up pace with the turnover to get to the new jobs that we thought we would put in starting January 1st. Not gonna happen, so. While we're not saying, go away, we don't want anybody else to come here with jobs. We're certainly not on a track where we need to panic about losing jobs. We, we're not on a, in a situation where we need to worry so much about slowing the pace down just a little bit. There's a lot of other things that we could focus on. Again, back to what Jerry said. We're not, by any means trying to put a damper on our growth. We realize that. But you, you know, it can be, the pace can have an effect on a lot of other things. And the extent to which we, these growth at any cost can have an effect on a lot of things. And sometimes the effect is not positive one. That's all I think.
We just pray at the end that it will all be worth it. And that at the end of the day, the project will be greatly beneficial to us all.
We most certainly don't want the wrath of God for the rain down on Ed and us.
All right, with that, let's move on to the Harris County Business Park expansion. Ed, you wanna take that?
Well, this is a industrial site expansion that Harris County is undertaking. They are looking at creating a 35 acre parcel for a future industrial project. They're not a project in mind right now. They have, they are working on some revenue sources in order to, to get this done. And the county's already approved some of the county funding to support the project. As many of you remember, years ago, the city committed, along with Harris County, to jointly work in the park to, to fund industrial development. And up until this point, I think we've been very successful out there with recruitment and the ability to create jobs and investment in the community. With this project, you've got some information, you're packing on it. It is a, again, it's a, it's a site development. It will require some infrastructure to be built. And the city has in the past provided its funding for the utilities to be built in Harris County Park. We've paid for everything out there. Some of that has been funded in various ways. This particular project for us to build in sewer is $128,000, $38,000. The water is $230,700, which is $358,838. We have spliced 2014 Harris County funds that were collected. And we are holding those funds that would, that would pay for that construction improvement. And we have a proposed gas improvement that would cost $280,000. And we have gas that can pay for that improvement in the park. So, our total would be $638,905.30. The total project is $2.382 million for the, for the, our project. So, as we go through this, we'll be asking that city to commit those funds to this project for, for utilities to be available for future industrial projects. This is, well, what part of the industrial park? It is, if you're familiar, where, where the new, they saw plant was built. Kind of the newest plant that's down low is just behind there. So, there's a, there's a site just behind they saw for their future expansion that they've already committed to. So, this site would be, would be on the other side of that. Harris County already owns the property. So, they're, they're not the only community that funds. They've already committed to own the property.
Is this in the city limits?
It is.
Anybody else have any questions on the park expansion?
Does that, when we make, city services accessible for the business park, does that also, is that also allowable to residents in that general area? On the, on the route, the same route?
Well, there, there won't be any residential areas. This is inside of the park, so there, there won't be any expansion outside of that.
No, I mean, I mean existing residents that are out in that area.
Absolutely. Any residents that we pass that we can provide services to, to, we'll do that.
All right, let's move on to Electric Cities of Georgia Joint Purchasing.
This item is a service that's provided by Lakefront City. It's joint purchasing. We do electric cities. We pay electric cities a fee to provide services such as engineering, going services to the city. And we benefit from this service by, that's what it's in. They provide us with a service to put the contracts out. You all would benefit from it to get the best bid, material that they possibly can. And then we're able to purchase those along with the other cities and electric providers that are, that are in ECG's membership. So, this is really relatively simple and complicated at the same time. The current language that is in the contract is, is very difficult. It's, it's a formula based, it's based on kilowatt hours and how those kilowatt hours are allocated by each city. And what Electric Cities wants to do is change that language to a fixed cost to each city to use that service. So, all cities would pay the same amount on an annual basis. Currently, we pay $6,083 a year for the service. Under the new contract that the council approved, our power fee increased by $765. So, we did $7,648. 75% of the membership has to approve it. The city did not approve it, and the other cities did. We would, we would still be, if we stay in the contract, we would still be obligated to pay that amount. I think it's a fair request, and I think it really clears up a lot of the gray areas for how it's, how the formula works and how. The larger cities initially, it was set up that way for the larger cities to pay more. And again, this is a, this is a more justifiable way for all the cities to pay for the service that you use. And, and you don't have to be in joint purchasing. It's where we sign up for with ECG. I gotta inform that, I'm not even wrong, I can't.
Okay, any questions on the joint purchasing for ECG? All right, Ed, thank you. Next on our agenda is the board and committee appointments. We have, these are three appointments. Historic Preservation Commission, Jane Fuller. She has expressed interest, but I don't think she's turned her form in yet, has she? And then the additional one is Marshall Sapp. And he has turned his form in, and it's in our packet tonight for your review. So, any questions, comments on the board and committee appointments? What's that?
I was trying to leave in West Point.
I know we've had some exceptions, people serving that are not residents. But as, as information purposes, I was interested in that.
I don't think it's an exception. I don't think it's a requirement. That's all we're not gonna know.
Well, wrong word, exception. We, we forget, had precedent then, that we've had people who are not. It's not the usual thing, but we have deisolated situations where we pull out. We're not residents.
Any other comments on committee appointments? The next item is 1111 Second Avenue Downtown Residential Use Request. And Dennis, you'll take this?
Yes. Once again, in the area that we have, we have a request at 111, 1111 Second Avenue from a central business district to allow for a commercial, a once restaurant, Stephanie's Restaurant at one time, to be allowed by the city council per the provision, per the ordinance to allow for a residential multifamily use in there. Just pretty much straightforward in, in what you have. It's basically was at one time a residential unit. It still has much of the makings of a house. And it was requested by Mr. Paul to turn that over back to residential use.
So, which house is this? Is this where the T run used to be?
Mm-hmm. Rod cars from over there, yes.
So the conversations we've had about these types of issues relating to properties in that area recently have been whether residential would be allowed upstairs or downstairs of the park.
It's always allowed upstairs. When you develop in the central business district, it's the downstairs. So we deal with downstairs, it's up to the council to determine whether they would approve downstairs residence.
Yeah, I knew, my point is, it's been kind of a mixed bag. We, we bring things to go back and forth. My concern is, we need to, I mean, what, what should it be? Should we be dealing with this number of exceptions? Is that area, should, should we just blanket all of it for residential? Or do we like to do it this way? Do we like to take it on case-by-case basis and depending on who's asking, we make a decision?
That, that, that's, that's a choice of the council and how they want the development to go, or even the municipal planning board to look at that. I do understand that there's probably a big move to residential in that area. But it's also, in, in speaking with some of the people, they like to have, not just there, but they like to have the op, option of having an office located. So we changed all those areas. We got a bank that's located within that area. We've got a lawyer's office and also a, I guess, a.
Well, it's the business district, so I don't think, I mean, I'm, I'm not thinking of those as exceptions or special cases. Obviously, First National Bank's been there for, what, a hundred years, or Capital City, or wherever. It's part of the central business district, like all of downtown. What we've done in recent years is kind of evolved to where we're doing housing as well, mixing the use, which is kind of the wave of the future, I suppose, in many, many areas. And it certainly gives us an opportunity to utilize that space, whereas the property was just kind of storage and before now, it's living space. But I'm, that was a house, that was a residence. And that's, I'm, I'm referring to those types of properties. And there's several down in that Second Avenue area that would fall into that category. The one right, right across, the Atkinson House, same thing, and it evolved. And I meant to, okay, I just simply asked the question, because it seems like we're all over the place with that. And it depends on who's asking as to, you know, how we, how we handle it.
Have we ever not approved one that asked to have the bottom part either become commercial or be reverted back to residential?
One of the former.
I don't think we have.
One of the former people were saying that we had done it without their knowledge, that we've done some things without it being communicated, kind of like the Webrow thing, you know?
Where was that? Which one, which one are you referring to?
The Atkinson House.
The what?
The Atkinson House.
I think we're hard to find the information, but that's not okay.
Yeah, we, we discussed that, that didn't happen.
You all say that it didn't happen, just like you say that that didn't happen out on Webrow. But, and let's not go there.
I trust from the staff, doesn't.
You weren't there, and so I'm gonna go there. We, we provided the information that we, we didn't do that.
Okay, you provided information. But if anybody really has the time or the interest in going down that rabbit hole, I think we will find it, some information to support what these folks are saying is happening in the way we do business. And I'd just like for us to go by the letter of the law and, and not, you know, say it one way or mislead. I'd like for it to be above board. And, you know, everybody be on the same page, and hopefully it be on the right page.
In my experience, it has been. And I, my experience also tells me that if it had been up to me with the example of Webrow again, we would have done things, things greatly different out there. But the law was being followed. And with the letter of the law's being followed, there's not much the council can do or should do to date the truth. And that's, there are times when we have to trust city staff, because we're certainly not experts on this stuff. We hear and we respond as best we can. And I, especially when it comes to criticism from the outside, from with, from outside. But there are also people that get very upset with the city, and everything's critical at that point. And so you have to take some of that criticism with a grain of salt.
I think we have to look at things objectively, and we draw this to how you feel about it personally. And I certainly try to do that.
Well, I think we always need to have the option of reviewing these things, because somebody someday is gonna come up and wanna put a residential property right on Third Avenue, on the ground floor. And we need to reserve that, that right. There's six properties on Second Avenue down there, and four, four of them are now residential of the six. So there's only, and this is, this is the fifth of the six that would go, so.
And you found how many of them?
Two of them, two of the six.
The funeral home and the one that we're talking about now. There are things that happened down that road that, you know, that you have to kind of quest, have to take note of. I mean, it was, it was voted to close the street. The council voted to do that. It was reopened, it didn't come before the council. I mean, it's just, we, we don't, we do things kind of.
It did came back for the council to, we voted to open it back up again.
Yeah, it was. Because Stephanie asked that it be opened up, and we did, it was brought to the council.
I beg your pardon, I understand correctly. I noticed that it was open, I didn't cut. The decision apparently was made before I came on the council, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You just delayed doing it, because it wasn't open for the longest time. I was on the council, I do know it did not be, not come before us while I was here. But anyway, sometimes you have reason to delay things. I beg your pardon, I take it back that I said it didn't come, it came before, and then for whatever reason, it wasn't done for months.
All right, any other questions on eleven-eleven, Second Avenue? Any more discussion from anybody? All right, we'll move on. The next item is West Point Day. So I'll open that up for the council for discussion.
Okay, I asked that this be put on the agenda shortly after the Labor Day weekend, because it was a reminder this year that every year, something happens around this town. We were all surprised that anybody wanted to gather for this type of event, considering the pandemic last year and this year. Apparently, everybody's not of the same opinion on gatherings. And we well know that, because we live in Georgia and have a low rate of vaccination. We have a low sense of urgency and seriousness about the pandemic. But be that as it may, there were activities. There have been activities or an event of sorts for, I guess, four or five years, maybe. One year, West Point Vision was a sponsor. They did an excellent job, in my opinion, and in the opinion of a lot of other people. I'm sure you, you can find folks that would say it was not a success. They spent a lot of money, did a lot of fundraising, to be able to do it in a way, a fashion, that was prescribed by the city. To my knowledge, there were no incidents that would make you think that it was not successful. It was a full weekend of activities, well, good, good participation. Some people would, might say it was too good, because it draws people from miles around, draws people from areas that, you know, where the folks don't know anything about West Point. It's, it's like, it evolved from a, an event that started out as a homecoming of sorts, a block party, community block party of sorts, evolved to something that was much, much bigger than that and with some issues. My point in wanting to discuss it with, among council members and city leaders is, it's our business if we have situations occur where the safety of our residents and our guests are kind of in jeopardy, or compromised. The first year, maybe not the first year, but one year, in order to disseminate the crowd, we had the drug dogs brought out. Not a good look. It embarrassed me to be from West Point with that going on. The next year or one of the years, and, and I mean, when that happened, some people are scared of dogs. I'm not a love animals. Some people are not, they were, they were not raised that way, and they're afraid of, of dogs. So they're running all over, stepping on each other, potential to hurt people. Might have been some people with some minor injuries as a result of that. Does not look good. One year, the, I guess the response was an issue. And that was what caused me to ask the question early year this year. Are we prepared, since there seems to be some plans being made, are we prepared for the weekend? And I was told, you know, all right things were said, we're gonna do the best we can, we're short-staffed, everybody else is, it's a holiday weekend, but we're doing our best to be available to citizens, as we should. And that, that response came from me, because last year, a family called and did not get a response. Was told to call Lagrange, got a response, will come, and then shortly after that, can't come, don't have West Point's permission. All of that sounds bad. It's our responsibility to respond to citizens when they make a call and they need police protection or to the police intervention. This year, helicopters swarming, control the crowd supposedly, make people go home. Folks come out of the house to see what's going on when the helicopters are swarming. I did. My first horrible thought was, what has happened? Is, we, I hope nobody else got hurt. When I hear it, I'm about two or three blocks from the area where medical helicopters land to pick up patients to take them to trauma center in Columbus or wherever. That was my first thought. Fortunately, nothing like that had happened, but it was an attempt to disseminate the crowd. Have to do it, I'm certainly not saying that the condition that existed at that time, which was people in the streets couldn't get a safety vehicle through if you wanted to. You gotta have the streets passable. You cannot put residents in jeopardy or in danger by not being able to get to them if there's a house fire or if there's a heart attack victim or whatever. You need an ambulance, you need a fire truck to get through that area, you need to be able to do that. So the streets must remain passable. So not by any means am I saying there aren't issues that need to be addressed when something like this takes place, but by the same token, if and when it takes place, we've gotta be ready to respond. And we need to not be afraid to talk about what happened, what was good, what was bad, what can we do to improve if it happens next time? And make some decisions before the pressure is on, before, we got all these folks, no, no, we got, they gotta go. Gotta, you know, gotta get things cleared up. Plan it, talk about it, and I don't know who needs to come to that table, it's not, it's not just the council. You know, the police chief, the, the fire chief, there are a lot of stakeholders that need to be involved in that conversation. But we seem to wanna put our heads in the sand and hope it goes away, hope nobody plans to do it this time. And if they do, turn off the electricity to make the music go off. And I, again, don't misunderstand me, I am not pointing the finger at anybody who made the decisions. I'm just, I'm pointing the finger really at us for not having a better plan and better strategy for the fact, rather than being so reactive at eight o'clock on Sunday night before Labor Day, and all these folks are in a six-square-block area or whatever it is. And we want folks to go home. There are a number of things that could be talked about, you know? Is it, is it rational to say you're gonna have a picnic or an event like that, and it's gonna be over at eight o'clock? Most folks, if they're having an event, they, you know, on a holiday, that's kind of early. It may not be just a factor of the time, though. But there are things that need to be, how do you control how many people get into that area? Not, rather than waiting until thousands are there and then wanting to clear it in twenty minutes. You know, there are a lot of things, I think, that needs to be discussed, considered. And it may be, one of the things may be that you just, we just don't have it at all, but you gotta figure out a way how not to have it at all. Because if people are on their own, you know, you know, in their own yards, on their own property, you can't really dictate that they can't have a picnic in the yard. But you can address people parking in the wrong place, people making streets impassable, people not adhering to directions of the police department or whatever, whoever's controlling, patrolling that area. And with regard to the shortage of staff, with anything else, you gotta go with the ebbs and flows of what's going on. You got to, on, on one given day, there may not be anything going on. And you don't need a lot of people. On other weekends, you may need to have some backup. You may need to have some folks that can work overtime, can be pulled in on an on-call basis. I certainly don't have all of the answers, but my concern is that we tend not to wanna talk about it. And then there are things that are quite frankly embarrassing. I don't want us to be the next Ferguson, Missouri. And, you know, when, when I hear, you know, we don't have, we can't go in, putting our offices in danger, too many people, I don't want that either. And the last thing I want is for somebody to, you know, who's afraid of that many folks that don't look like them, to go in, grab their gun instead of their taser or whatever, and shoot somebody running away. Fortunately, we have not had that situation to occur, and I hope we never do. But honestly, it concerns me that we are getting into a mindset of use the dogs, helicopters. I mean, there, there are times when, and places where that's necessary. But West Point Day is, in my opinion, not one of those situations. Now, I defer to the experts in this field. And I know you all were a lot more involved in it than I've ever been. And that's been the criticism of me personally, that you haven't come to these events in the past. You don't hang around with folks in this area. Not true, but it started out as something that was very, very innocent, very, I think, very much so something that all of us can appreciate. People coming back home, just moved away years ago. It used to be Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day throughout the whole summer. It used to be just folks over in that certain area, and it has grown to something different. It's an event. It needs a sponsor. The city should not be the sponsor of it. If nobody else steps up to the plate to sponsor it and activities take place, as the city, the city didn't go away. We've still got to address public safety issues. And if there's a problem, if we're called, we need to go. If, you know, we need to keep the streets passable, we need to do that. And we need to have a plan for it before nine o'clock, eight o'clock, twelve, whenever, on Sunday evening, when we're ready for this to be over. So I say all of that out of concern for the city where I was born and raised and intend to continue to live here. If I wanna have a party, I don't want to have somebody else telling me where to have it. You know, there's been a lot of country, a lot of conversation from both sides. Why can't they have it down here on the river? Well, we could. You can have it in a lot of places. It could be a state or city-wide thing, really. I have people say, why'd they call it West Point Day? Because they're not a part of it, they feel like it does, doesn't represent them as a resident of West Point. So why, why do they call it West Point Day? It's not West Point Day. It's just something that's going on in that little community. Oh, that's true. Doesn't matter what you call it, I mean, you call it something altogether, it's different. But there are some advantages to having events. It needs to be controlled. It needs to be controlled, it needs to be safe. And I think we're not doing our jobs as council people and leaders of this city if we continue to look the other way, continue to brush it under the rug. After all the hoopla, somebody's on oxygen, they got cut off, you know, how many residents cut off, they had power interruption. All of that is bad, it sounds bad. You know, people who need oxygen have a backup, I understand that. The person might have had a backup in this case. But the real issue is, was that overkill? Was it necessary to go that far? And if so, you know, maybe somebody can explain that. But I don't think we would have gotten into a situation where any of that happened, any of those years that I mentioned, you know, whether it's the dogs, the helicopters, the power interruption. All of that, I don't think we would have gotten into the situation if we kinda knew where we were headed before the fact. Did some things to mitigate the problems that come with that many people coming to an area that size. Now, with regard to the River Park being a better place, it's, there's a whole lot more space over in the area where it's, where it happens than down here in terms of just square footage and the number of people. So I don't know that that's really a good reason to say we're gonna have it here rather than there. And again, if Joe's having a party at his house and he wants to have it at his house, Didi Williams can't come and say, Joey, you shouldn't have it over there, why don't you have it down at the River Park? I think that's a decision that sponsors should decide on. And there are many reasons why it's been held in that area. As you all know, there's a lot of vacant lots over there, filler lots, where there used to be homes, they're not homes anymore. So as far as keeping people out of the street, there's plenty of opportunity for them not to be in the streets and make them impassable. I've gone on far too long and I see Joe looking cross-eyed at me over here. So I will close it out at this point.
How's your voice?
Still strong.
Some people made, I think, made a suggestion that they have it at a different location, that that was not the desire of some of the people that was in charge of it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And it should be the decision of whoever's sponsoring it, I guess, or whoever the hosts are. And I don't think it's about necessarily where it is. It's about the service that we need to provide as a, provide as a city, if there are things going on that need to be addressed. If people are parking in the wrong place, if people are, you know, making the streets impassable or whatever.
And I did have a conversation with the chief. I didn't say it publicly, but we did have a discussion about the things that happened. And I talked to him about it, and he was open to the conversation, very much so.
And I did the same thing the week following, and I will commend him on being very open and realizing that we need to do some planning on the front end.
I think right now, the biggest problem with what has come to be known as West Point Day is the fact that the event itself is somewhat schizophrenic. They can't decide what they want to be. Is it going to be an event or is this a private party? Is this a few residents that get together and it won't keep the event or the party contained to their property? Or is this an event that's gonna spill over into the streets and into those vacant lots and up the street and into the highway and over into church property? And, I mean, I've had complaints from every angle. I've had support from every angle. And I've been to at least three West Point Days. And I've walked the streets and thought that this was a great event. And then that evening, it seems like the bottom fell out. And I don't know who's to blame on all that, but I think proper planning, like you have suggested, from all angles, from all sides, and an insistence on events being permitted. I don't think you can have an event that's gonna attract a thousand, two thousand, five thousand people and allow that thing or any event not to be permitted. Somebody has got to be responsible at the end of the day. And saying, well, we're having an event that's not an event. And then people wanna compare it to other events that take place in town that are sponsored and have been permitted, and that you just can't compare the two. I mean, West Point Day has become probably the biggest event in West Point every year. It has the potential to be something that's great. It also has the potential to be something that's very dangerous for us all. And I think that's why planning is imperative. I think the police department needs to be involved, public safety needs to be involved. I think sponsoring organizations need to be involved. And I think it must be permitted.
And I think that therein lies the bigger question. The control of permitting an event. You said, you touched on it perfectly when you said, you can't say this event is not an event. I mean, just the dichotomy of that, it makes it an impossibility to control. So that is part of our assignment, I think, to figure out how to address that. Now, I'm curious about, you said, the bottom fell out, and I'm trying to figure out.
You referred to that. Everything from dogs to helicopters to people spilling into the street to what seems to be chaos in the moment and at the moment. That's what I mean by the bottom fell out. When it wasn't that way when I was over there.
Is there, is there any way that we can find out information from the other cities that are actually having these same events, how they handle it?
As police chief, my job is public safety, to keep the citizens and visitors in West Point safe. To do that, to keep these officers safe. I'm glad we had this discussion, that we talked about it. We are at crossroads. That event and that location is not safe. It's not. I've had conversations with members of the pre-organization that have this, say, okay, move to somewhere where it's larger, more space. They don't wanna do that. If you let me go back a little bit, 2018, my first. Not saying everybody in West Point who's there, look, I'll be fine, they're gonna have a good time. They leave, it's supposed to be over eight, nine, what the time is. The later it gets, the worse it gets. People don't wanna leave, they won't leave, when they leave, it goes to gas stations, they block the gas pumps, they block the gas, the gas stations are called. They're so disrespectful that it goes to church parking lots and spin off the church parking lots. That, we cannot have a day of lawlessness. We can't have that in the city. Twenty-eight, the later you got, the worse you got, had troopers here. People riding dog cars across the state highway voted it. Well, we voted, hell, let them have dog cars. You can't drive a dog across the state highway, it's illegal. You can't do that. And then people look at us, well, why's I let them get dog cars? I didn't remember doing anything. I can't hold right state law. Troopers hit to assist. 2019, the Uta City spending money buying barricades. We met, we talked about that, you know. The later you got, the worse you got. People leave, troopers here, the net here, out there across the state line, troop county came. And the trooper, and I'm gonna say this, because I've talked to Mr. Stone brother. The post commander, next week when he told me, he said, I was disclosed, been calling Atlanta, getting SWAT team out here. Now, that's embarrassing. For him to say, he don't have to call the SWAT team to West Point. That's what he said. Because people throwing things, and officers throwing balls, bricks. One leave, the dog, he says, one dog, it turns into, it's five, it's one dog, I'm staying here for that. Dog, dog, they'll be stopped, they'll take officers, they won't have so many people. 2020, no permit. So basically, people said, we don't do it anyway. 2020, we had a car shot up. 2021, turn out the light, yeah, brother, back to city. But that's the first night that we live there at ten thirty and not two thirty A.M. We don't have so many officers. Everybody that has is out there. You gotta remember, we have shift work, twelve to twelve, six A.M., six P.M. Those people out there on Sunday from six A.M. to six P.M. on Saturday, they gotta come in next morning. You see, they gotta take the rest of the city, our other tax leaders. They gotta come to work the next day. Those officers that come in Sunday evening, some of them are working Monday morning, six A.M. They're not robot, they're not used to sleep, they can't stay up all night. You call those agencies, it's holiday weekend, it's, our troopers are out patrolling highways. It's Labor Day. Working rats, writing citations, we had one this year. This first day on the job, first time, he said, I don't know, first time down here. Because they're short, they have people out the coat. Troop cameras, they have their own challenges, short staff. Now, all people come because there's an emergency, but they're not gonna come beforehand. We call the net, that's another state. So everybody's dealing with their own challenges. They're gonna look at a lot of books, if they come to my house, to their people, they gotta explain to their council, city manager. Why'd you have our guy down in the first place in West Point? And they get hurt. So we're at crossroads. That event, helicopter, it's for safety, it's to see where people are. In that condensed area with trees, it's the middle of the night, you can't see, it's dark. The helicopters have to help us see where people are, they're leaving, where they're going, officers are, communication, that's why helicopters there. So, excuse my language, but what are we doing down the dome? Police not doing enough, and next time you're doing too much. So what, so what, so, I don't know.
You're preaching to the choir.
Well, sometimes, sometimes I'm not sure. Labor speaking people speeding up now. We need, we need a council to speak up. Something, you're silent, then you, you can't text and call meetings and say one thing, then next day you're telling someone on Facebook.
Being silent doesn't serve any of us. Talking about it, communicating it, is the only way we're gonna solve any of these kinds of problems. I hear everything you're saying, we've already had the conversation about it. And we know that, you know, you and I have a disagreement on whether or not the space is not adequate. It's not so much about space, I don't think. Here versus there. But, you know, we can agree to disagree on that, that's really not the issue. Is are we going to address it from a public safety standpoint? Or are we gonna continue to try to keep everybody safe, folks that are over there and out? You made the point. That's not the only thing you have going on that you need to worry about on that weekend. You got other folks calling you too. And if it's, I don't know if it's staffing, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's resources, money, whatever. But we need to figure out a way to address this. It is not gonna go away, I'm pretty convinced. And I think when Auburn plays, Alabama, whatever, and there are folks everywhere in a much larger space, but still, they're dense, condensed. Sure, they got a lot more resources than you have. They got a whole lot more people to deal with addressing and getting out of the area too. So they got the troopers and they got counties all around there coming to help do that. People manage those issues of keeping streets open, keeping folks from parking where they're not supposed to? Yeah, two people can't do it, or six people, or whatever our staff load is. But we've just got to figure out what we have and what we got to deal with and how we're gonna deal with it. And if it's not sponsored, we can require that it be sponsored, but if it's not sponsored, that's one thing, but we still can't just say, oh, I'm out of town and not be here because we're not having a sponsored event and whatever happens, happens. You know, we just can't do that. And so, don't take it personally, I'm not pointing the fingers at anybody. I'm not trying to shoot anybody with detail. But it's as much a reflection on me as it is on the council as it is on anybody else in this room when things continue to happen the way they have happened in the past when it comes to this one event.
We all work together on Facebook, so the tendency to have meetings.
Well, it's not just one, it's not just one event. I mean, there was an event in our neighborhood some months before this that was a spontaneous event that required a lot of backup and support in the night. So I think the question is more than just West Point Day. I think it's what happens when a whole bunch of people get together that were not permitted and are not, maybe not doing things in a wholesome manner and cooperating.
And that was addressed very differently, I think, than West Point Day has ever been addressed. Maybe because of the size, I mean, it was a lot more people, I guess, over on Main Street than over on Wells Road, the instance you're referring to. But we need to address things consistently. And based on what was going on over there, they addressed it appropriately, I don't know.
I just think we need to plan for whatever spontaneous things that happen that were not permitted.
But how do you make somebody get a permit? How do you make them get the insurance? I mean, somebody answer that.
I don't think you can if they're not, if they say they're not having an event. But then if truly an event's going on, then you gotta do what, what.
Well, the community's gotta stand up and say, look, we all agree that people can have a party, a picnic at their own home with their friends at their house. Nobody here would wanna stop that. But to have three, four, five thousand people to promote an event that large for our community, as small as our community is, as small as our police force is, on a holiday weekend when we cannot control it, is irresponsible. And we need to take a stand that this is not something that we want to have happen. I want people to have, invite your family back home, family reunion, have a get-together at your com- but having people that you don't know show up from wherever because it's been sponsored as a huge event and we're all going out here partying in the streets is wrong and it overburdens our police. And we need to figure out a way, that's what the discussion we need to be having, is how can we not be doing this? Have parties at your home, have friends over all the time, I'm for that. I'm not for having this type of event on city streets with the chaos it creates. And I hope that the rest of y'all feel the same way. And that's what, that's what we need to be focused on, is how we do not have this. You've just heard from our chief, it's not safe. Something's gonna happen someday, it's gonna be tragic. We cannot do that, that many people in that confined of an area.
So I think we have to have some means of coming together to develop a strategy to deal with it. And in this room, a lot of folks are within earshot of what the concerns are. But the people who are sponsoring it, if you will, not sponsoring, saying they're not sponsoring it, but actually the ones that are communicating on Facebook that this is gonna happen or that's gonna happen, they need to come to the table too. I mean, because I don't think you can control what people are doing if you don't communicate with them.
Because when it was sponsored and it was a very good, a very, excellent event. It was fun.
Especially throughout the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was lots to do, lots of activities, it was family-oriented and friendly. And I don't think any of the officers, I don't think any of our firefighters that were out there would say anything. It was great until the sun went down.
And with regard to it moving to other locations, I think that's partially a function of timing that was set for the event. You gotta go by rules, I understand that. If it's supposed to end today, it's supposed to end at eight, we need to have a plan for how we're gonna kind of move into that, other than putting everybody in the dark. But at the same time, if it moves to the service station and, you know, they said the service stations are calling saying they're blocking the pumps. I've heard just the opposite from some of those convenience store owners. You hear about events like this in any city. How much does it put into your local economy? How much, how many dollars goes in? Ask Gibran's Foods what their sales numbers are for that weekend. They gear up for it. There's money to be, there's benefit that can come from it. Not at the expense of people getting hurt or being totally chaotic, the whole thing. But there are some advantages to having people come to your city and spend money. They gotta buy gas to get back home, maybe, whatever. People spend money when they come to an area. We need to look at how we can benefit.
I'm not talking chief, I'm talking me. With my backyard backing up to some of those gas pumps. Is what they do is when the, the party is over and the police have asked people to leave, they go and they deliberately park all in the filling station parking lot. And because they've been told they need to turn the music down, they crank it up. And you've got ten cars back there seeing which one can be the loudest. And that's disturbing the peace. Nobody's making any money during that time because nobody can get in and out of the, uh, filling station. And so, it's, and it always happens when the sun goes down. Yet, without fail. So there are definitely problems needing to be addressed with this event, if we're gonna call it an event. I, I wish we could call it an event because it would be nice if it truly were sponsored and truly was planned in cooperation with the city instead of, uh, opposition to the city and maybe vice versa. It'd be nice if all parties could work together.
Well, as you know, I live just two doors from you and I'm not aware of any of all of which you have witnessed at the convenience store behind you. And then there's a couple, another one not too far from there, and I've spoken specifically and personally with those folks. And I don't know why they'd be parking and blocking the, blocking the pumps if they're not getting gas. But anyway, that seems like a minor thing to address to me. Anyway, going on too long on West Point Day, I'm sure it is, it is important to be that long. And, um, I hope that we will see...
Sounds like West Point Day is okay, but West Point Night is where the problem comes in.
Well, hopefully we can, and I don't know who's charged this should be, but, uh, we're all in it. And so, we need to have a continuation of, uh, the discussion so that we can address before, the weekend before, next year, twenty twenty-two.
We got eleven months.
We got eleven months.
You do, we, we always do have twelve months from when it's end, and we don't do anything, don't say anything, and we act like not, not something needed to be talked about until it's sad to talk about it again, and it's too late. Now, I'm just saying, use the eleven months to come up with a solution, hopefully, that will make it palatable for everybody. Whatever needs to be decided, do that. I don't think the current status is where we want it, a long time.
Okay, recreation signs, Ed.
This is, uh, an item that we talked about in the past, uh, the council has, and we talked about it with our SLOSP for recreation. It's just something that we've never really pushed forward. Um, Ms. Marshall called me this past week and, and was talking about some signage for John Hoxfield, which I think's come up, we'll take a second and I'll be exactly where it's at. So, I pulled this back out and put it in your package, really just for discussion. And then if, uh, if it's something we want to move forward, we can do some, uh, some, some further work on it. But, uh, if you look, we've got a, um, there's three areas for signs here. One is at the intersection of Avenue D and Tenth Street, which would be the largest sign. Basically, um, just some type of sign there that would, um, advertise all of recreation events, um, other type of events that the city has. Like Point University events as well, things are going on in the city, uh, that we can advertise there. So a larger type, uh, message sign at that location, something decorative that looks nice, right there at the main entrance in. And then, as you go down to the intersection of Avenue C, we can have a directional sign there, which would be a G dot approved sign. So it wouldn't be as big as the one in this photo, but, uh, you know, just have John Hoxfield and Activity Park and River Park. And then on the next one, there's a sign inside of the park that would give, uh, direction to, uh, John Hoxfield again, South Hall Park and youth area and the, uh, just additional parking, basically. Again, it's, it's something that I know we talked about for several years, even back in some of our, um, retreats that we've, we've done, we've talked about some signage. I can certainly put together some pricing, uh, to see what it would cost. Certainly the, the larger sign in Tenth Street and Avenue D would be the most expensive piece of that. But I'd be happy to do that, it's something the council wants to consider.
Yes, please.
Has there been any consideration for, um, a redo of the logo?
For?
For the city.
Not anything formally now.
Okay, any other questions regarding signage? If not, let's move on to traffic calming installation locations.
Well, just to keep with the process, um, we've talked about this now several times. We did put out a questionnaire to the residents affected in those areas where you see, uh, eighth of those back. All were in favor except for one that felt like the, uh, the track control, um, items that we specified in the, uh, in those areas would work. So, uh, we'd like to get council approval when we go through the process to install those four locations that we have discussed previously.
Which one, which area specifically were people not, was the one person?
Um, I'm not sure.
You got the four places listed, yeah?
Yes. Avenue C and E seven, M L K and Avenue K and E nine, E six, Reganville. And we have received multiple complaints in those areas.
You say you received eight from all four of those areas. How many did you send out? Because some of those intersections don't have, like, they don't have houses even on all four corners.
Probably thirty.
Thirty.
We, I sent out what appeared to be, some of those are in blocks, so we sent out the entire block. And then at least a couple of them is on the inside of each intersection.
All right, anything else on traffic calming? Let's move into the budget presentation then.
Okay, twenty twenty proposed budget, we reached that time, uh, the departments have worked hard to keep their budget information together. So our, our proposed budget total for twenty twenty-two is seventeen million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, thirty-six cents. I'll break this down in departments, not to get into too great a detail, but the general government, that's eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. Police department, one twenty-eight million. Fire department, one point four million. Highways and streets, eight hundred forty-four thousand. Virginia Cook Center, ten thousand. Recreation and parks, eighty-five thousand. Planning and zoning, three hundred fifty-one thousand. Economic development, two hundred and sixty thousand. Depot, forty-two thousand. Youth services, a hundred and five thousand. Technology center, seventy-three thousand. Nine one one communications, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. Sewer collection, three hundred and nine thousand. Sewer treatment, one point six million. Water, one point five million. Electric, six point three million. Gas, one point one million. And sanitation, five hundred and four thousand. The total budget for twenty twenty-one, uh, currently is eighteen million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. So, uh, the twenty twenty-two budget is a reduction over the twenty twenty-one budget. The items that are in that, uh, the twenty twenty-two budget that are somewhat different from the previous budget, I did ask the department directors to look at their budgets and cut their operational, um, costs and, uh, did that in order to provide what I think is a warranted, a cost of living adjustment to the employees that have really worked over the last two years in a very difficult situation with everything, uh, that's going on in our community. Um, so I'm recommending a four percent cost of living adjustment. As y'all know, typically based on the, the CPI, which is three percent. So we're adding an additional one percent to the CPI for that couple requests. We have the purchase of two police vehicles in the budget. And overall, citywide, uh, we have worked with ACOM, our, uh, I T provider, to increase our I T security. And that's gonna be, um, an increase of about thirty thousand dollars annually to our I T services. And again, that's, that is, that is really centered around security that everybody here, you know, continuously, that there's uh, security issues out there and cities being hacked and all type of things going on. So that, I think that'll be a good upgrade for us. For twenty twenty-two, um, just a couple of things, really just one, uh, for this, uh, for, for the, for the overall city government is, I think it's, uh, based on the fact of requesting an increase in the cost of living adjustment, I think it's time for the city to do a new wage and salary study, to look at all of our positions, make sure that we're in line with other cities similar to us around the state. And, uh, so I, I think that's something we'll be recommending to the council in, in twenty twenty-two. Other than that, with a reduced budget, everything else will continue to provide the, uh, the same high level of service that our, that our city staff always provides. And I can't say enough about our departments and our, and our people that get out here every day and, uh, work very hard to provide this community with high quality service. The other piece of our, um, budget would be SLOSP, uh, the troop, SLOSP. We have a million dollars in paving that we intend to spend next year. We talked about those streets previously, and the council's approved those. In twenty fourteen, Harris County, we included three hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the water and sewer improvements that we talked about, um, earlier in this meeting. A couple of items, uh, and rates and costs, uh, based on the, the CPI, uh, the water and sewer increase of three percent. We followed that path since we put that in place many years ago, continue to increase the water and sewer rate so that we're not one day faced with having any exceptionally large increase. On the electric rate, uh, I would like for us to review that in twenty twenty-two, um, and bring in E C G to look at that with us. Just to make sure that our rate is meeting all the, the current standards and that we're, we're billing, uh, billing, but we are applying our rate the way it should be applied to all different sections, whether it be residential, commercial, whatever it may be, to make sure that we're doing those things properly. And do the same thing for the gas rate. We've talked about that internally for a few years now and we, and we feel like there's some changes that can be made as the industry has changed and the way that it, that it rates gas to its, uh, customers. But again, that'll be a discussion, we'll have the, the gas authority, um, the, uh, electric cities come and really dive into that with council. Sanitation, and I'm gonna go through, um, all of the proposed increases there. This year, uh, or for twenty twenty-two, our expected expenses is five hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Our revenue is three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, so we'll have an income transfer of a hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. We are recommending an increase of three percent on the residential rate, an increase of three percent on the commercial rate. And we are recommending a fifty cent per month increase on the roadside trash collection rate. If y'all recall, we, again, talked about the roadside trash collection and how far behind we are really on that rate. That's the reason for a little bit higher percentage there because really at six dollars a month, we're probably about half of where we need to be. The majority of that transfer cost, um, well, all of that transfer cost really is due to our service that we provide as far as roadside trash because we do it in our sleigh cars and our stuff, a part of it anyways, um, service. So, um, that being said, you got a copy of the budget, posted online, we'll have a copy of that, and we'll see how it green. Residents that would like to come by and take a copy of that. And we'll have the first, first couple of hearings and we'll be able to report.
Will we also get a copy, or?
You got, you got a copy of your packet, but we can, we can email your copy or we can print it out.
It's in your book.
Oh.
And then it was emailed also.
Okay, all right.
We would be glad to get your copy of all of them.
All right.
Hey, you read my mind on the wage steady, um, situation and you're gonna do that next year, you think you'd be making a recommendation to do that in twenty twenty-two? But do you know the four percent, uh, COLA, uh, for city employees? Do you know how that compares with what whoever we compete with or our, um, employees? I don't know if you draw from surrounding cities or from all over the state of Georgia or whatever, we don't have that many openings, I'm just saying that. But, um, the competition for the people you're trying to hire, do you know what, how this four percent compares to the going rate this year?
You may as well.
Really?
Just, just that. I, I haven't seen any, anything from Georgia cities.
Did you, yeah. And what about the American Rescue Plan funding? Uh, is that, that's apparently not reflected in these numbers?
It's not.
Okay. And is that two million in or what is that, that we've already gotten?
So, what we, what we have received current, um, no, it's, uh, we receive six hundred and forty thousand.
Six hundred and forty thousand?
Okay, maybe I'm thinking about it different, but, um, it supposedly West Point's supposed to get two million.
Well, we apply for the state fund for the water and sewer project. And then the money, the, the funds that the cities already receive, we're, we're holding those in reserve to match that, that application that we made to the state, which is what we put in that application that the council approved.
And do we have any information on what, in addition to that, should be forthcoming?
No, there's not, if there's any additional funding, I don't know anything about that. We haven't heard anything, any additional funds.
Um, and on the other side, the Kia Parkway, the, is that our responsibility to maintain the median?
It is, it's city shit.
Cities, I would think that is, I mean, it's in the city.
It is.
Yeah. And so, is that our staff that does that or contract that out?
We have an inmate work detail that, that cuts out there as well as our staff.
I know that there's probably some, you know, some thought behind the scenes on the paving issue that came up during the S D S conversations. But, when I, when I go through other areas, like industrial park areas, they just look more, um, maintained than Kia Parkway does. And I was just wondering if there's anything we could do to kind of improve the appearance. You know, the grass growing over, not the paving, not as to, I know that's on your radar, I, I would think.
Well, we...
Grass grow, you know, the, just the edging and...
Right, for our, I, I just have to be honest with you, for, for the size that we have in public works, we dedicate more time on Kia Parkway and Kia Boulevard than we do at any other place in the city. So for us to increase that, that's why we moved the inmate work detail out there in the wintertime. Because most, most of their time is spent in cemeteries in the summertime during the cut season. So, you know, we'll, over the winter, we'll get everything trimmed up and looking really nice and cleaned up and edged. But then when grueling season starts again, they'll get ahead of us as, as it's going to whip.
We've had a long grueling season. Been a lot of rain.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, mother nature has been against us when it comes to that.
Hey, can I back up a minute? I was reading this, it's some really good info... I was reading this, some really good information on how to save in gas. Is there any way we can put something like this in our utility bills and of course on our, our well page?
We can.
Okay.
But that was prepared by the gas authority, we just got those. And so that's part of that.
And do you know if there's any funds available anywhere to help people to upgrade the houses? I mean, at one time there was some funds, I think they came from Trup County, uh, here or somewhere. Hmm.
Yeah, the chip funding that we have, maybe there's, I don't-
It's all, all gone?
Yeah. I think, I think it'd be interesting, and I'm not asking anybody to coach any great extreme error in any lab work, but it'd be interesting to see, uh, how much it would cost the average resident and commercial, the average business, uh, if, if we fully funded sanitation. I have more for information. You know, I, I think people sometimes are, are highly critical when the city has, is really going to extreme lengths to try to lessen the burden of that particular service on our residents. And I just think it'd be interesting, like I said, to see how much it would cost to actually be in the black, how much we would have to pay, uh, per, per resident. Right. And you're, and you're correct, that is on the roadside trash pickup because we are, we are doing that on the garden side with the contract and what we're paying and what we're collecting. Again, that's another reason for keeping that, that cost adjustment moving forward. So if it's double, if I, if that's pretty much on the roadside collection, would then roughly twelve dollars per business, per resident, how much it would cost? I have to, I have to look at that. I know that was kind of just our goal that we talked about. But even two years ago, we were four dollars and forty-five cents, which the council's done. You know, made a good step last year, another fifty cents this year, but, um, we can start and look at accelerating that. And I mentioned it before, but I, I just, that much off the subject, but it's on the subject that made the impact. We've talked about collection centers before, possibility of having, of reviving, uh, a center where people can bring recyclables and, or appliances and things of that nature and not be alongside it. Which would certainly help expense-wise, I would think.
We, we, we pay for a convenience center, I don't know why we can't have one. We're certainly funding, funding plenty of them in the county, we ought to have one here. Hand.
Can we also check on, uh, getting the boosters? We had a lot of people that did the vaccination, I think you took care of that Steve before.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll be happy to ask again, but I don't think they're going to do the way they did-
Before.
Before with the boosters. I think it's going to be, and I think we have a lot less that get the boosters. Let me, let me wrap up the final item and then we'll get into all these others. Council, you have received information on the rezoning for three properties. There will be a public hearing at the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one work session. These items will be on the agenda for discussion following the public hearing. So the items on the work session agenda for Thursday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at five thirty PM are the public hearing for rezoning of Arrowhead Drive and Sundri- Sunset Drive, rezoning for eighty Sandtown Road and the rezoning for forty-four Sandtown Road. The public hearing for the twenty twenty-two proposed budget, the Harris County Business Park expansion, the Electric Cities of Georgia joint purchasing, the board and committee appointments that we discussed earlier, eleven-eleven Second Avenue downtown residential use request and the traffic calming installation locations. So those are our next, next agenda. And as far as announcements, uh, we talked about the signage for Hogsfield and I'll make an announcement. We had an incredible, incredible event Sunday for Ms. Elma Brock at Hogsfield. I've never seen the turnout. And deservedly so for such a wonderful woman. And, um, just, just incredible and just a neat use for that, that property and a, and a great show of love from the community, from Ms. Elma, who would be greatly missed. Any other announcements?
I just want to add to that, that, uh, the Hogs were mentor Elma-
Yeah, there was a connection there, yeah.
When she went to college, they, they basically helped her out. So it was perfect place to have her home going.
May I, um-
Yes.
I have a question, I think for Richard maybe.
Okay.
Do you have any idea what kind of response we've gotten with the early voting?
I don't know.
Not much.
He's got all kinds of stuff.
It was posted on social media.
The early voting started, uh, October the twelfth, and it, it'll end on October twenty-ninth. And in the Harris County portion of West Point, um, from, uh, that day to the twenty-fifth, yesterday, I believe. Harris County, we had eighty-two people that had voted and the rest of West Point, sixty-one. Melian's, we had twenty. So really, we only have a total of a hundred and sixty-three people who have voted in the last, uh, couple of weeks. And since we brought that up, this is not anything new. We've been having early voting for, uh, municipal elections. The, what we don't have, and I've been saying it over and over again, is early voting for the general election because the city at this point is not responsible for the general election. So that would have to come from Harris County and Trup. I just wanted to throw that out there.
And it's always good to throw information out, and I'm perfectly clear on that. So, you know, city elections, we pay for it.
Right, and, and we've always had early-
Yeah. The reason I ask the question is I learned today that in Columbus, Mascoe County, fourteen hundred people voted. That's miniscule when you consider the number of registered voters they have. And the thought is, you know, that we may not serve a lot of people by doing that. And it may seem to be wasted money, it's a convenience.
We've always done-
We want people to vote, we want as many people to vote as possible.
Absolutely.
And so it may be expensive. And at some point, maybe the general consensus will be, we don't need to do that. But I think we need to do it at this point.
We always have.
Yeah, we're not all-
That's why I keep saying, the city of West Point always have had early voting.
But we're not unique in that if real people don't vote and they don't vote, or we do not, or we, why do we do it? We really do it because we want to encourage it.
And I, and I'm pretty sure we'll continue to do that.
All right. Any other announcements? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Who's cooking?
Who's cooking? I hope my dinner's waiting on me. Oh, y'all? We're talking about a dinner, we're still being recorded, so y'all-
Hey, Gerald, tell Richard I need to-
Okay, catch Richard, catch Richard.
Seriously, you giving me money?
Can you take that? Can y'all accept that if I sign it back there?
Yeah.